Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting, Thursday, February 20, 2025. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Clerk Frances, please call the roll.
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Marshazka.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Cost.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also present, Manager Frances.
We have a quorum. And for the President's Report, I'll begin with a resolution authorizing the village president and village board to appoint Emily Stenzel as village clerk effective February 20, 2025. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Motion and a second. Deputy Clerk Frances, please call the roll.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cost.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
The resolution is approved, and I will approach the podium with Emily to swear her Repeat after me. I, Emily Stenzel.
I, Emily Stenzel.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of village clerk.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of village clerk.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For those at home, Manager Frances, could you just give a quick bio of Emily's work with the Village of Riverside?
Sure. Emily started with the village actually as an intern and became the fiscal assistant. And actually, her title was reclassified this January as a management analyst when she then applied for Ethan's position of village clerk and special assistant to administration and finance. She is also working on completing her Masters of Public Administration, which she will graduate actually this spring.
We did advertise and reach out for candidates for this position, and Emily stood head and shoulders above all the other candidates that we considered, and we're very proud. Anytime we have the opportunity to promote from within, but it has to be earned, and Emily has earned that. So thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
And we'll get you a proper nameplate.
Ethan made this one for me.
Next, in President's Report, could I have a motion to confirm the appointment of a village advisory board and commission member to approve the appointment of Jonathan Kirk as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring in May 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cost.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion is approved, and Jonathan Kirk is appointed as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Jonathan, and as always, thanks to all of our volunteers who serve on our various committees and commissions. Upcoming meetings. On February 26, the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet here at the Riverside Town Hall. On March 6 is our next village board meeting, as always, here in Room 4 at the Village Hall. Some upcoming events and activities. Tomorrow, Friday, February 21, is Family Skate Night. This event is free to the public and will be held at the Big Ballpark from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Special thanks to the Big Chill Crew of volunteers that helps coordinate this event and maintain the ice rink. The ice rink, I believe, formerly titled the Bill Sherman Memorial Ice Rink. Please come out as you are able and enjoy our ice rink. Also tomorrow is a Family Bingo Night. If you don't like staying out in the cold and ice skating, you can be indoors at the Family Bingo Night. Registration is required, and the cost is $5 per person. The event will be held at Riverside Township Hall at 27 Riverside Road from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. Finally, with all the snow on the ground right now, it's the perfect time to take photos and enter the Sesquicentennial Winter Photo Contest. Anyone that follows the Community Riverside page knows that we have great photographers in this village, so I encourage you all to participate. The contest will be open until Thursday, March 20. Photos should feature winter in Riverside and reference any unique, recognizable aspect of Riverside's landscape or architecture. See the entry form on the village's website. That concludes the President's Report. Manager Frances.
I have two quick items. For those that might have missed out on the 150 Street Sign Auction, you have another chance to win. We are holding Winners' Choice Street Sign Drawing, and you can buy tickets at our village offices at 27 Riverside Road, also at Quincy Street Community Center, the Riverside Public Library, and also online. Tickets are $10 each, and the list of over a dozen signs are on the village's website. Tickets will also be made available at the Puzzle Race event on Saturday, March 18. You must pre-register for that Puzzle Race, and please, you know, if you want to attend, register soon because spots are running out. Additionally, registration for our popular spring soccer program is now open with early bird registration through February 27 and a deadline of April 3. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Resident comments on non-agenda items. This is a time in our agenda where we reserve for anyone who wants to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda. Items on the agenda, everyone will be given an opportunity to speak as they wish. Non-agenda items, yes, sir. Please introduce yourself and let us know what you're here for.
Hi, my name is Joe Wise. I've lived here 30 years. First, I want to thank you guys for sending out the letter to residents around Blythe Park because quite a few of us attended the meeting at the library. It was concerning expanding their playground, and the second thing was putting a basketball court on which, and I wish I would have gotten a copy of their layout of the Blythe Park because I could show them exactly where they can expand the playground and still leave the trees there. The second item is the basketball court, and I have a petition, and some of my people who signed it are here, opposing the basketball court just because we would like to keep the green space. It's, I just, they, the school kids have basketball rims over at the, in the south parking lot at Blythe Park, and I don't think we really need a basketball court and taking away more of our green space. Who would I submit this? Thank you, sir.
And once again, thank you for letting us know about the meeting.
Absolutely. And, I'm sorry, what was your name again, sir?
My name is Joe Wise.
Joe Wise, first on the list.
Go ahead.
Got it. Thank you. This is exactly why we do that.
And that's why we appreciate you guys liking us for our input.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Same item. Greg Ostrowski and my wife Dawn, 56 years at the location on Kent Road. And I agree totally with Joe, our neighbor, that green space is important in Riverside, and so is activities for our kids. However, the, I think the place that they were thinking about for this basketball court would be Hardscape. I don't think that's good for that area. The oak trees are very important there, and we have a large tennis court there that's hardly ever used. But I do see a number of kids all the time in the area around the green spaces playing wiffle ball, touch football, wrestling, hide-and-seek, and also it's a pretty dangerous area there now that they cut down all those trees that used to be there, and I've seen balls and kids coming close to Kent Road. So I think it's a safety situation, too. But I do, I do support activities for kids, but I don't think a basketball court, Hardscape, is the right thing to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for everyone's information, that process is still ongoing. We're working on an intergovernmental agreement with the school district regarding the park, Blythe Park. Nothing's been decided in terms of where or how or design of a basketball court, but it is something that the school district is looking to add for their, for their students. When a final design, when and if a final design is prepared and moves forward, it will be in public before any decisions are made. Thank you, and thank you for attending. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Tom.
I'm Tom Lufre. I'm a newbie. I've only been here 20 years. And I brought notes. There's only nine pages, so. I'm here to talk about the leaf blower ban. I own a landscaping company, and I'm also the president of, or former past president of the Illinois Landscape Contractors Association, and we've been dealing with this issue for a long time. But I'm not here as a business owner because we don't work in town. I do my house, but that's about it. There are several issues that need to be addressed when we're thinking about this issue, and we know that because these bans have been instituted across the country. We know the results of what happens. The first one is a social equity issue. The medium-sized companies will leave immediately. That's my size company. I'm not going to deal with it. I'm going to go where my customers are. The big companies will transition over to the electric, which costs about $10,000 per trailer for all the handheld machines. It's no big thing to them, but the real loser are the Hispanic companies who have no idea what's coming at them. They don't get the emails, alerts, they don't get the board e-flashes, nor do they have the resources to make the change. They're single-operated, there's three guys in the truck, and they're not going to spend $10,000. What happens then is the large company then calls and turns in all the companies that are using leaf blowers. They have their managers. I have a colleague up in Evanston who is the largest company up there, and he loves it. He calls, hey, this guy's here, hey, this guy's using it, kicks the small guys out, and now he's raised his prices. We know this happens because Evanston is a great example of the chaos that ensues. So on a social equity scale, it's a disaster. It benefits the corporations, harms the mid-sized companies, and devastates the Hispanic companies. The next thing is the environmental effects. Small companies can't leave town. It's their, their customer base, so they adapt. What they do is they take a two-cycle engine on your back and start using a 26-horsepower engine on a lawnmower. And they run their mowers backwards and use the chute as the blower. Now, as the, as an owner, the last thing I want is a mower without a chute because it is shooting out debris at a high rate of speed, and it will poke an eye out. It will cause great bodily harm as compared to a blower, which is usually using air to impel it, so when it hits you, it just drops. So the danger is not there with the blower. I'm sure you've seen them do it. They do it all the time. They'll, you have one guy in a mower with a weed eater, and he goes around town, and that's the blowers they use. So, and it's a much less efficient. It takes them twice as long, and it's a massive increase in fuel costs. So the environmental aspect, it's a disaster. It increases the carbon footprint off the charts. The next issue is personal safety. So now when they're pulling back and using the mower to blow the stuff out, kids are about this tall. After school, they're going to walk through a gauntlet of mowers shoving this stuff out, and they're going to be hitting in the eye four or five companies a day between their school and their house. So public safety is a disaster. It's just something waiting to happen. My company, we never take the catchers off our mowers for that exact reason. The last one is the public safety. So after all that, you decide to do this, how are you going to enforce it? We don't have a billing department. We don't have inspectors on call. So when these flood of phone calls come in, because they will, people, it's exactly what happens when these go in, they start calling. There's five or six people in town, and then the companies who are competing against these guys are going to start calling, and you'll overwhelm your staff, and we have no one to respond to them. So what happens? Our cops are going to go out there, and they're going to be writing code violations rather than doing DUI checks, rather than looking after public safety and all that kind of stuff. So we're going to turn our cops into code enforcement officers, and they're going to stop doing police work. That's the last issue that I see at this day and age is what happens when the police respond to a call and those Hispanic workers are undocumented? What are you going to do? What are the police going to do? Is there a policy in place for that? I think that's a Pandora's box that we do not want to open. There are some solutions, and this is really what's happened, and it's restrict work times. So during the week, 8 to 7. On Saturdays, 8 to 2. On Sunday, 12 to 4. So you can restrict those work hours to lessen the impact. I mean, my neighbor, his guy shows up at 8:00 a.m. every Saturday morning, and I hate leaf blowers. It's an occupational hazard. I hear them all the time. So it's, it's the one solution. The other thing you can do is have a public outreach program, explain to people why it's annoying, but why companies have to use them, encourage their landscapers to not use them. A lot of companies will change. There's Dig Right In up north, he's already done it. So you can find alternatives. Maybe you do it yourself. This is from the company's point of view. I'm not talking from a residential point of view. So that's a whole nother point of issues, but from a business point of view, this is a disaster. It would, public safety, social equity, the environment, personal safety, kids walking home from school. So I would urge you to drop this idea. We have the results. We know what happens. It's not conjecture at this point, and go more towards the alternative methods of education and restricting the work times. Sorry it took so long.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that input. That's helpful. Anyone else, non-agenda items? Next is the consent agenda. Clerk, Clerk Stenzel, please call the, read the consent agenda.
Approved Voucher list of bills, February 20, 2025. Approved village board of trustees' regular meeting minutes, February 6, 2025. Approved village board of trustees' executive session meeting minutes, February 6, 2025. Review and file board and commission minutes. Historical commission regular meeting minutes, November 18, 2024. Preservation commission special meeting minutes, January 8, 2025. Landscape advisory commission regular meeting minutes, January 14, 2025. Review and file department monthly reports. Public Works Department, January 2025. Police Department, January 2025. Fire Department, January 2025. Community Development Department, 2024 annual report. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of $405,000 for 2025 maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code. A resolution approving and authorizing execution of a revised intergovernmental agreement for participation in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. A resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a supplemental statement of work for a shared services model with municipal GIS partners and issue a purchase order for a total amount not to exceed $25,000 for Microsoft Business Application Configuration, Development, and Maintenance. An ordinance excluding the Village of Riverside from coverage under the Cook County Paid Leave Ordinance.
Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Sign them. Would someone like to make a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cost.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Consent agenda is approved. Next is department board and commission reports. We do have a report from our Landscape Advisory Commission. Director Tab, will you please introduce this item?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce the chairperson of the Landscape Advisory Commission, David Rubin. He's going to provide a 2024 year review and 2025 goals for the commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Just wanted to let you know what the commission has been up to. Last year, we set up a literature stand in the library, which you may have seen, and we are putting educational materials into there, updating materials as seasons changes. Last year, we co-hosted a wildflower walk with Shaun Sinn in the spring. We worked with the Hauser Evergreen Club, the RBHS Ecology Club, and we've worked with Eagle Scouts. We, one of our missions is to do assessments of the triangles and parks in Riverside, and we started '23 doing a lot, and last year we did a lot more, so there's just a few left. And then we'll end up updating the master landscape plan probably the end of this year or early next year. We had an invasive trade-in program in the fall, and with these clubs that we've worked with and just the Landscape Commission working on their own, we had two plant giveaways last year, and over 750 native plants were given away, and we planted over 1,300 plants in nearest schools or in the triangles or in the parks. That's just the highlights of last year. I've listed everything. For this year, we're going to be promoting native plants by doing plant giveaways, plant sales, and native plant education. We're going to have spring and fall invasive trade-ins. We're going to educate the community on the benefits of converting from electric, or from gas to electric landscape equipment. And we're monitor, we are monitoring Swan Pond. I'll talk a little more about that in a minute. And we're also going to do some events in conjunction with the Sesquicentennial Celebration. We're doing a BioBlitz in May, a plant giveaway in May. We're going to do triangle and park tours, and in September, we're going to do community, show the community how they can use the parks to their advantage by doing treats under 150 I mentioned Swan Pond. Half the budget we've been given is to pay ILM Environments to do different types of work in Swan Pond. One of the things they're doing is just taking inventories of what's out there. So from 2023 to 2024, the amount of invasive plants in Swan Pond has gone from 8% down to 7%. The goal is to get less than 5%. And the overall coverage of all plants in the area in Swan Pond has gone from 96% to 97%, with a goal of 100%. Last year, ILM Environments did a lot of herbicide applications, primarily targeting Reed Canary Grass but some other invasives. So there were four invasives that they had been working to eliminate before, and they've added five more, so there's now nine different invasives that they're trying to get rid of. And as far as the native plants, in 2022, there were 62 species of natives. 2023, there were 91 species of natives, and last year, 104 species of natives. So it's almost doubled in two years, partly because we're planting seeds out there and partly because if you get rid of invasives, it allows the natives to grow. And as far as the quality of the natives, there were six, last year, there were six new natives that are of higher quality that were inventoried. There's a measurement of the quality of, of plants called the Floristic Quality Index, which is from 0 to 100, 100 being the best, and you'd want it somewhere between 20 and 50 for a medium-quality area. 2022 was 18.3. It's gone to 23.2. Last year, 24.4. So we've gone from not a great area into a medium-quality area over the last couple of years. And that's all I have to say about the Landscape Commission. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chairperson Rubin? Thank you, David, and we really appreciate all that the Landscape Advisory Commission does. Those are some really good, encouraging numbers, and we're excited to see them keep going up.
Yeah, we enjoy doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pending business, a second amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Village of Riverside and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for design, construction, operation, and maintenance of Groffland Avenue levy improvements. Manager Frances.
Thank you. In the spring and summer of last year, the village board discussed modifications to the design that was presented by Army Corps of Engineers based on the increase in the cost. There was also discussions about requesting supplemental funding, and so we narrowed the scope as to what the design we wanted to look like, but then also figuring out how we are going to pay our, our share, which is the 35% or anything that's in excess of the $10 million that the federal government will appropriate for the project. And since that time, so we, as reported previously, we submitted all the required documents for the additional funding. It was before the MWRD Board. It was then authorized for them to issue a, an amended IGA, which when, then was reviewed by our legal counsel and their legal counsel, and so the final amendment is before you this evening. Of note is that our funding would go from $2.5 million from MWRD to $4.9 million.
Any questions from trustees? Any public comment on this item? Sign them. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'm moved to accept the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Cost.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Resolution is approved. The next two items on the agenda are related to the village zoning ordinance, and the other related to our certificates of compliance. I'm guessing that there's a few people here who want to talk about the certificates of compliance. Am I correct?
Yeah.
So I think if the board does not object, I'd like to take that item next. So, item C, discussion regarding certificates of compliance for property transfers. Planner Siren.
Do you want this? Oh, yes, please. That'll be great. Okay. The, the purpose of this discussion is to address complaints from realtors and attorneys about the certificate of compliance process and to ensure the process only includes what is necessary and helpful to buyers and the village. Steph has already made some improvements internally to the process, and we have suggestions for additional improvements. Riverside's certificate of compliance process is required when a property is sold or transferred. There are several steps, including an ins- There are several steps, including an inspection, a zoning review, closing out permits, and performing a final water reading. It also results in a certificate of compliance, which is a form that was included in your packet and that lists all the zoning nonconformities on the property. The village also takes the opportunity to collect fees, a final water bill, and any outstanding invoices, which is a very significant portion of the certificate of compliance, and I'll mention that later. The village stamps the deed for the transfer, which the county checks when they record the property. So we're working with the county to make sure that this process is done accurately. So many communities have some type of property transfer process. Some require a building inspection. River Forest requires a zoning inspection, but only to ensure that the property complies with occupancy limits in the zoning code. None of the communities that we surveyed require a zoning inspection of all zoning features like the village does. So here's an overview of those. Incidentally, I gave you a great deal of information in the staff memo about the history of this process, which can be summarized into a couple of bullet points. One, this process was initiated as a, I think primarily to inspect for occupancy. I think there were some illegal dwelling units. Now, I'm basing this on incomplete meeting minutes. But basically, there was something mentioned that the initial purpose was an occupancy inspection, and then the scope kind of grew from there. At the time, the plan commission did not recommend including all zoning items in the compliance review, but that was passed by the board, and I'm not sure why. The minutes don't speak to that. Just to mention about legally nonconforming zoning features. That certificate of compliance lists all legally nonconforming zoning features. These are features that can be maintained as they are, but either they can't be replaced, or they can be replaced within specific limits. So for example, a nonconforming fence can't be grandfathered in. You have to build a new conforming fence if you replace your fence. However, driveways, if they were built prior to November of 2020, if they're too wide, they can be replaced as is. But those are both legally nonconforming features, meaning that the village isn't going to go to a property owner and say, "You have to remove this either right now or when you sell the property." It can remain until it reaches the end of its useful life. Nearly every property has legally nonconforming zoning features. Illegally nonconforming zoning features would be something that does need to be removed. Wouldn't be allowed. So the certificate of compliance also lists any features that are unique to the property that aren't necessarily zoning-related. So if you have a local historic landmark house, if you're in a flood zone, if you've received special zoning approval, those are included. I've listed only two advantages of the certificate of compliance. That's not to indicate the, the number doesn't indicate the significance of those. It's a very important process because it does mean that the village does have a transfer from one owner to the other in terms of its, the final water bill and any outstanding invoices. This is, before the process was put in place, there were some real problems. So this is a very reliable process for the property transfer. It also notifies buyers special property features. In terms, now this is staff's perspective, it does require significant staff time. So I just did a kind of a back-of-the-napkin calculation here. In 2024, we had 149 standard certificates of compliance. If you transfer a property in a trust, for example, that doesn't require this process. This is if you're actually selling to a different person. So with 149 standard compliances at an average of two and a half hours each, that's 372 hours spread among staff and the five different departments. So it does require staff time. The process is unique, and it requires explanation. We have some folks who are very familiar with the process and can kind of guide folks through this process, realtors and attorneys. Some folks who aren't familiar with the process find out we've got good information on the website, but they may be surprised when they discover this process. They're familiar with property transfers, they're just not familiar with our process. So it takes some explanation. And the resulting compliance can contain a lot of information that may not be of particular interest to the buyer or very helpful. It's a lot of zoning minutia. The feedback that we've heard is that the process is confusing and complex. Again, most other municipalities don't perform a zoning review, so that's been, everyone has to be educated who's not already familiar with the process. So that puts a burden on staff. It puts a burden on local attorneys and brokers to do that work. We have updated the website to be as clear as we can about the process, and hopefully that's been helpful in directing folks. But, you know, it is a novel explanation. So because it, there's a zoning review involved, it does require additional time. So in some contracts, the survey, which is required for the zoning review, isn't ordered until the property's under contract. And sometimes that can be a pretty short window, like a month. So during a busy season, if you order the survey the day they have the contract, and you've got 30 days, the surveying company might not get to the site for a couple of weeks. And then they have to survey the site, return the survey, and that leaves a very limited amount of time for staff to receive the survey, analyze it, produce the certificate of compliance, and then get it to the client. And then they have to sit down and review it and make sure they understand what's in that. Now, staff has done everything we can to let folks know that we will do everything we can to do that process before, as soon as possible. So if we have an old survey that's mostly correct, we'll take that old survey out and do the inspection, and then make any corrections when we get the corrected, updated survey. The fact that we'll do a, we call that a draft certificate of compliance, the fact that we'll do that is on our website. I think most of the local folks I work with have all done that at one point, just called me and said, "Hey, we're selling this property. I've either ordered the survey or will order the survey. Can you do the compliance review?" I said, "No problem. I'll do that, and I'll send them a draft letter," and then answer any questions that they have. So that's helped. But not everyone knows that we have the process. So if they get to closing and they find out they have the process, we can't do that for them. Also, there is, in some instances, a need to correct violations. This comes as an unfortunate surprise to some. We have, it doesn't happen very frequently, but we've had a couple of instances where people have done major renovations without permits. Now that we have a full-time building inspector, that's less frequent, but that has happened, where we're concerned that electrical systems, water systems, mechanical systems could be a safety issue. So we've tried to address that by getting after-the-fact building permits from those folks before they close. Obviously, this throws a wrench into the contract, delays things, and, you know, causes uncertainty. There are a couple of other very infrequent violations that I'll mention in a minute, but that's one of the issues, is that obviously people under contract don't want uncertainty. They want to know what's going to happen, so that makes things problematic. In addition to these improvements, staff has a few additional recommended improvements. So we want to refine the zoning review to only include the information necessary or helpful to the village and the buyer. They included this chart and a detailed analysis of each of these items in the packet. But effectively, the items in the left-hand column are those that we would like to include in the compliance. Some special zoning notifications, some things about the property itself, like the lead service line, the fact that it's in a flood zone. These are things that are unusual, that a buyer wouldn't expect to have, or that they need to know because they need to be notified. For example, they're in a flood zone, or they have a lead service line. The items on the right-hand column are things that are thing, things that owners aren't necessarily going to fix. If their house is too tall, they don't need to fix that. When they build a new house, that'll have to be compliant, but that's, the fact that their house is too tall is not an actionable item. Driveway widths, for the most part, again, most driveways are grandfathered in at this point. Fence seems like a smaller item. This fence can remain to the end of its useful life when it is replaced. It needs to be conforming, but the fact that you have a nonconforming fence isn't an actionable item. So the resulting certificate of compliance would mention a couple of things related to zoning, but mostly would mention these special features that are listed here. But the two items that I think are pretty helpful for folks and that do require an analysis is the building coverage and the impervious surface coverage. So this example just lists those two. The example in your packet, I think, also lists the fact that there's a lead service line and the property is a landmark structure. This is helpful because most folks won't necessarily know if they're building a patio or a shed that building coverage and impervious surface coverage could apply to that project. So this notifies them of those facts. And also, the sentence near the bottom of the page, "The property may have legally nonconforming zoning features that can be maintained but cannot be replaced." We can massage that language a bit, but that was recommended by President Pollock, and I think is a helpful and important note to have on there. And then we direct folks to the website where we would provide more information about standard nonconformities. What does it mean that, you know, if I have a nonconforming fence? That's included in our fence standards, but the idea is to provide more information on the website that's universally applicable, applicable to a lot of properties with nonconformities. The item B is that zoning inspection sheets that I mentioned, that would be included on the village's website. Item C is staff recommends only doing home and building inspection, building interior inspections when necessary. So right now, the code requires an inspection of the property for every property sold. So single-family, condo, commercial. That's a considerable amount of staff time. And again, the purpose was initially to identify illegal dwelling units. What staff recommends is keeping or retaining the ability to make those inspections. If we feel that there may be a safety issue or prohibited dwelling unit, we can go and inspect and confirm that, but otherwise, not inspect the interior of the home. That will greatly reduce the amount of time required to do this process. A lot of times, listing photos provide everything that I would need to see to do the zoning review, and that combined with a survey, I can get that all done. The fourth issue is to clearly define which violations must be resolved before a property is sold, with the idea being that we're only doing things that we consider major items, safety items, or things that are in, directly affect village, or are directly guided by village policy. So for example, recent extensive, non-permitted property renovations involving electrical, plumbing, and mechanical systems. Again, these are rare. You know, some folks do a little fix-it-up around the house before they list and sell their house. We're not trying to go back and correct all of those maybe non-permitted work and check that. What we want is if there was a major plumbing system that was installed without a permit, we had one recently where it actually required upsizing the water service line, so they had to replace that, upgrade the water service line, so this was fairly extensive work. Our recommendation is to limit any kind of enforcement to those instances regarding building permits. If we know or suspect there is an immediate safety concern about a property, we would like to pursue that and have some sort of condition and the compliance for the sale. I can think of one example, which was an incomplete flip of a property that was non-permitted. There was a construction staircase in the middle of the property that provided access to the second floor. It was unsafe. I identified it. We worked with, out in agreement with the buyer and seller, that the buyer would get a permit, put in a proper, safe staircase within X amount of days of buying the property. And then, non-permitted hardscapes and street yards. This is exceedingly rare, but based on conversations that the board has recently had, I think important to discuss. So again, most driveways are grandfathered if they're too wide. We've seen, I know of one older driveway where a parking pad was poured in a street yard, and they would be required to remove that when they sell the property. Another was a driveway extension that was installed two years ago. So after the ordinance was approved, that limited the width of driveways. You can see in Google Street View very clearly, when the driveway was installed, it was, took up a lot of the front yard. It was a smaller lot, and we required them to remove that before they sold the house. So that would be an example of something that's in direct opposition to village policy, something that we can require them to remove upon the sale of the property. We think the benefits of these changes is that this will drastically reduce staff review time, reduce inspections. That also means on the other end, the homeowner or the attorney or the broker doesn't need to be onsite to let us into the house. Saves them time. It provides certificates of compliance that are useful, clear, and don't include zoning minutia, which can be difficult to interpret. And it provides clarity on what must be addressed before a property is sold. That provides more certainty to attorneys and sellers and brokers. So in asking for the board's direction, we'd like to know, should the process remain as it is or change? If it should change, does the board agree with staff's recommendations? We have those listed. The first being refining the zoning review to only include the information necessary or helpful to the village and buyer, which I've provided here. I know that there are a couple of folks who are in attendance today who may want to speak on this, so we want to hold that discussion until after you hear from them. I'd be happy to do that. And then, taking a look at the other recommendations, do you object to using the zoning sheets instead of those items? Are you comfortable with having select home and building interior inspections? Are you comfortable with the violations that staff recommends resolving before the property is sold? And those are listed there. I did send this information to the brokers and agents and attorneys who most frequently work with the village and from whom we've received the feedback. I sent them this information and the information that was published in the agenda and invited them to come speak. I know I see a couple of them here today. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ann. Before we go to the public, I'll open up just for questions from the board for staff. And I've got a couple of questions. With these changes, can you estimate the hours per transfer? I think you said two and a half hours is the average now. Can you estimate how much that would be reduced?
I think we can cut it in half.
Thank you. And then, not on this sheet, but on the sheet of your recommendations, you use the term "when necessary"?
Oh.
That interior inspections, I believe, would be done when necessary. How would you, would you be able to define that clearly in an ordinance? And how might you do that?
I think so. I think the two instances that I'm thinking of is if there's a safety issue or we suspect a prohibited dwelling unit. We may want to leave the door open for an unanticipated reason.
Sure.
But those were the two things that I thought of.
Good, thank you. Trustees, any questions before we go to the public? Trustee Mateo?
I just want to start by saying, since you've been with us and since AVM Monroe joined us, you both, your department, your colleagues, have really streamlined our processes to benefit staff, but it's benefiting all the residents. And so I appreciate you doing that on top of all the work that you need to get done, like certificates of compliance. Some of the unpermitted work was discovered because an inspector went inside prior to a sale. Right?
Some was. I will say, we did receive a complaint. We have some eagle-eyed friends of the village who noticed real estate listings that boast about the different improvements that were made to the property. They notified us, and then we further investigated. So it wouldn't necessarily, now, our building inspector is excellent. He's very sharp-eyed and did certainly notice some of the improvements, but we do also receive complaints from folks.
And the inspector can spend more time on the street looking at work that doesn't have a permit.
I'm sure he would prefer that, yes.
Maybe you can summarize for the brokers and realtors. Is the issue more with the sellers than the buyers? Because I imagine any buyer coming into Riverside is completely unaware of landmark status, any of this.
The issue related to?
The confusion.
The confusion about non-permitted work?
All the explanations that go into the certificate and the buyer receives it.
It's kind of on both sides. Some sellers represent themselves. So they are, you know, folks who, you know, their attorney notifies them, "Hey, you've got to check with the village to see what you've got to do." And they don't know any about this, anything about this process. On the other end, when we have the compliances produced, the buyers and their agents may have questions about that. So there's explanations required on both sides.
One last question. Your table that has different communities and requirements. The first column is survey. What, very few of them require a survey, but what types of surveys are those? Were you talking about the plat?
Yep, it's a boundary survey. It's, plata survey, I think, is a term of art. I think a boundary survey is the current term, but, yeah. Several don't require a survey. I think that's essential to the, to both doing the zoning review and for when folks apply for building permits. That's the first thing I turn to is this property survey.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure I understand something. You said something in the material. So the interior inspections, it's your view that they actually do result in very few real concerns?
Very few.
Very few. So the source of those is typically from your friends of the village or other reports, and we're not finding, you know, unanticipated dwelling units or material compliance issues through the interior inspections themselves?
That's correct.
Got it. And then I'll- Got it. And then I'll just maybe question slash comment on the two and a half hours estimated time. Just having recently gone through this process, it seems like you may be a little bit conservative on how long that takes. Just to give you some credit here, I do want, you know, I don't want you hair cutting the amount of time that it takes staff for this process. Not that I was at all unhappy to welcome you into my home and have a wonderful chat, but the time it takes onsite is significant, and I know that there's a lot of work that goes onsite. So my guess is it's probably a little bit higher than that.
We try to be as efficient as possible.
I know you do. Thank you.
Trustee Evans.
So what would you need as far as, like, time or requests for a survey acquisition? For survey acquisition? The realtors have noted that, and you noted in the materials that sometimes it takes, you only get the survey within a couple of days of closing.
Sure.
Is there a way to ease that timeframe?
It is, so in terms of doing the zoning review itself, you know, that could be about a half an hour's worth of time, you know, but that assumes that I receive, and folks who I work with frequently are very good about telling me, hey, I've got the survey ordered, it'll be here at this date, you know, and I immediately will review it. The problem is, obviously, you have competing things that you have to work on, different deadlines, different things to review, so. But if I know something's coming in and there's a real crunch, folks are good at letting me know, hey, this closing is really tight, this is the best I can do for this survey. So in those cases, I try as best as I can to just prioritize, you know, making sure that I leave time in the day to get that done. But there's also some other things that need to get done before that compliance letter can be done. We generally advise folks, if we're busy, to allow two, two to three business days after we receive the survey, to get everything done and have a piece of paper, you know, ready to go.
That's not too bad.
We try.
Thank you.
I have a question. So on the list of the side-by-side things, where some things are permitted, some things are not, you said most driveways would be okay, but circular driveways are not. What's the definition of a circular driveway?
Circular driveways have a, an odd addendum in the code, which makes sense, but it's just, it's unusual, which is why I wanted to point it out. So there are some circular driveways that are rather large. They have a lot of surface area. If that property exceeds the impervious surface coverage allowed for that property and they want to replace that circular driveway, they can only replace that driveway if they bring the amount of impervious surface coverage down to an acceptable level.
Okay.
So that's why, that, most people wouldn't know that. It's very unusual, but I would want to call it out if there was that situation.
They can stay, just not the space that it takes up.
Exactly. They can keep it, they don't have to close it, but they need to reduce it.
Trustee Evans.
And there's only one item on the, on the left, a list on the left that is required by law, and that's the flood service line.
I believe also the flood zone may be required.
Any other questions before we go to the public? Does anyone in the audience like to address the board on this item, this issue? Please introduce yourself and let us know what, what your comments are.
My name is Joe Dvorak. I live at 261 Olmsted. I'm here to speak on the compliance. So first off, I want to say thank you to Ann. She's awesome to work with. I'm over here all the time, and there are times with surveys and timing, I mean, everything hits within 30 days. It's a fast process with lots of moving parts that are potentially delayed because of inspection issues or contract cancellations. So Ann has always been awesome. Her packet that you guys all have, she sent that, a copy of that to me. It is the most detailed agenda. I mean, maybe you guys get this all the time, but I was thoroughly impressed going back to, I think, 1984 and seeing some of those old-time riversiders on those boards and commissions. So I'm speaking here as a local attorney. I have been navigating these certificate of compliances for all the real estate transactions here in Riverside, or the ones that I'm involved in. In my 17 years of practicing law, the Riverside compliance, especially over the past year, has become very difficult to navigate. The uniqueness and confusion as it pertains to the compliance has caused many issues, questions, and concerns by buyers, sellers, and their attorneys. As you can see in the packet and went over it, similar towns that have been compared by you guys in the past that I think we compare well with, such as La Grange, La Grange Park, Western Springs, Brookfield, and Oak Park, they don't have any of this. Oak Park, you go in and pay your fee. Brookfield, you pay a $10 fee. La Grange, La Grange Park, there's nothing. You, you close the transaction, there are no stamps or compliances. So when clients ask what is involved with the certificate of compliance, I can't give them an answer right now. There's, I said, well, it's a zoning issue. Should we be, you know, the next question is, should we be concerned when they come through the, our house? I don't know. Did you do any unpermitted work? I don't know what you've done, and I just have a hard time answering that question. So there's a lot of confusion and just unknowns. And when it's a fast 30-day turnaround on these contracts, it causes issues. In the event that the Village wants to continue preparing these certificate of compliances, the recommendations as stated by Ann and on the agenda were at least headed in the right direction with some added clarity. I do request, and President Pollock, you touched on this, I think we need a definitive answer as far as these inspections go. And maybe that can be cleaned up, or that if we are requiring an inspection, that it's good for a period of six months, so it gives everybody a moment of time. Ann's been very good about certificate of compliances when we request a draft. I just hate doing it because I feel like it's double the amount of work for her. So that's another idea, to try to streamline this and make it as easy and as smooth of a transaction as possible. And then I also wanted to point out that if there's a violation and that it's known about, we shouldn't wait until the property is being sold. The enforcement should start now. And then, that's on the seller. If the seller's been receiving letters or notices from the Village, you know, I don't think we should wait to enforce that, even on a driveway, that, hey, this is something that you did unpermitted or that's in violation of the code, and I hope that it gets enforced. Now, instead of making my life a disaster three days before closing, we're trying to navigate that with the buyer and seller. So those are my comments. It's tough to navigate this, and I see advantages of it, making sure, you know, that people close out their permits, pay their final water. That's certainly an advantage, but just some clarity as far as what, what we're going for, and it would go a long way. So, thank you, Ann, and thank you for all of your time and all of your hard work being with the Village.
Thank you, Joe. Just want to clarify, when we have a code complaint, we do act on it immediately, right?
Yes.
We don't wait until...
Correct. The one that, that Planner Siren is referencing is typically when the real estate listing is posted and we're made aware, and then when we are able to get eyes on it. So it typically happens simultaneously with us getting a notice of, hey, we're closing. So it's not that we delay action on it. We're, as soon as we're made aware, we send out different staff members to investigate it, and so, but some of these items don't come up until the compliance process is initiated.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board on this item? Seeing done, I'll go to the board for discussion. Do you like the recommendations from staff?
Yeah.
Largely yes.
Yes. It's very well thought out, I think.
I think the recommendations are helpful. I agree with the commenter that I would like to see a little bit more precision so that there's a bit more predictability. I agree, again, having just gone through this process, I'm a lawyer, I'm paid to do complex things, and I found this very hard. Like, I didn't get the right stamp at the right time, and I'm running across the Village, right? And I literally work for the Village, I should have been able to figure it out. And so, and it was unclear to me when I asked, when someone's coming into my home, what exactly are they looking for? You know, I just think being a little bit more transparent about this process would help our sellers, because people don't know what to expect. It may also curb some people doing work that they shouldn't be doing, because they understand that there's a check on this process. So I would like to see a little bit more precision if we're going to continue with this process and a little bit more transparency, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I'll just note that if, I'm a little fuzzy on the, on the goal of it. If the initial goal was illegal dwelling units, but we're not really finding those, you know, this is a lot of process for something that's not resulting in catching those. If our other goal is collecting municipal debts, there's other ways to get, to get at that, right? That $10 stamp that you need or something like that, can, we can get at that. And so, I understand this is sort of deeply entrenched here, but personally, I do find this process off-market relative to all the communities that you showed to us. It's, we're pretty rare in that regard. I'm not sure it's tailored to a particular goal, so I'm, I would be open to curbing it maybe not entirely, but narrowing it a little bit more. But, you know, I haven't, I don't, I don't hear much from residents on this, other than when they're caught up in the sales process.
I would agree. I think that, without having those clear objectives of what, what we're trying to accomplish, I mean, I get it, she put up bullet points of clear objectives, but, but not catching the things that we were initially trying to catch, and then it seems like a lot of hoops to jump through for not necessarily what we're, what we were trying to look for to begin with, and I, you know, I agree with you that it's, it's very vague, and maybe this is because I have recently gone through this process as well. So also, I would say, as somebody like who bought and sold a house within Riverside, so I, the information that you get about your house, especially as this stands right now, is a lot of information that is, causes a lot of anxiety and isn't necessarily, you know, like she pointed out, like, there's a lot of information in there that you don't really need, that isn't really, you know, worth the time and the effort. I think this is in the right direction, but I would also probably be in favor of looking at refining this even more and/or really looking at what the purpose of this is and honing in on why we're doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I actually think that the items that are included in the recommended items to be included are very helpful for anybody who's buying a property in Riverside to be made aware of. I think these are the kind of things that if they bought the house without knowing about them and then wanted to do something and an issue came up, it would be exactly the kind of thing, well, nobody told me. And so, to me, I think that it is important that buyers know what they're getting into in Riverside, and it's, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure on the, on the front end. The one area where I do agree additional specificity would be helpful is the piece relating to the inspections as necessary. I think if we could include some parenthetical examples of under what circumstances an interior inspection might be necessary, you know, for example, A, B, C, that that would help the sellers know what to expect. But those are my only thoughts. I think overall, the work that's done into this, the efficiencies that it's going to help with, and the clarity are terrific. So, thank you, Ann, good job.
Trustee Evans.
I just wanted to, if we could maybe focus for a minute on the purpose of these, these compliance reviews. It's not just to be punitive by any means. There's, you know, there are like public safety issues behind some of the, the things that we look at. I mean, Ann, you could probably give more background on why we look at these things, but just, it might come off to their realtors and the attorneys as punitive when they're looking at the certificates of compliance, when really there's solid reasons for why we're looking at these things.
It's meant to be informative primarily, and some of the information needs to be given to folks regardless of whether it's in the compliance or not. So for example, if you have a landmarked house, you need to know that you need to get a certificate of appropriateness before you do any work on the exterior. We would send that notification, that information, if we didn't have this process, to the buyer when we know that they have bought the house. So they would receive that, they would receive a lead service line notification. They would receive notification that they're in a flood zone. Some of these are infrequent, but pretty important to know. So the, the fact that, now, obviously, this is a single-family, multi-family rental, they're in our multi-family rental program. So prior to buying the building, we've reached out to those folks, explained the program, given them the inspection sheets, explained where they are in the process, and done all that work. All of that is noted on the compliance, but as an explanation that happens prior to purchasing the property. So the purpose is not to be punitive. The purpose is to inform folks. Some of this stuff has to be given to them anyway. Some of it, I think, is just helpful to know as an FYI.
What does building coverage mean?
Oh, sure. So for each property, you have two coverages, building coverage and impervious surface coverage. And in fact, this is going to come up in a later topic today. But, so your building coverage is anything that is structural, over 12 inches tall, your house, your garage, shed, decks, those are all building coverage. So each zoning district has a limit on the building coverage that they can have. Impervious surface coverage, water can't move through the surface, so you've got roofs, driveways, things like that. You've got a limit for each zoning district for impervious surface coverage. The reason I suggested including it in that letter is because a lot of times when I'm doing building permit reviews, I think it would be helpful for folks when they buy a property, and if you're thinking of major renovation, you're probably talking to a contractor. You're thinking setbacks, you're planning ahead when you buy the property for that. But you're not necessarily thinking, hey, I'm going to put a pool and, you know, deck and things like that. You might not think, my property has limits on impervious surface and building coverage. So it may be helpful to know before you buy the property, hey, these are the limits, and the letter specifically states, let's see if I can bring up the example letter. Go the other way. Oh, here we are. So again, this can be refined so it's slightly less jargony, but basically, the building coverage on the lot is this many square feet, which is this percentage of the lot. It says there what your allowable percentage is. This lot exceeds the coverage, you can't add any building coverage to that, and it specifies what building coverage is. And then the next point, too, is about impervious surface coverage. It's jargony. It may not be helpful for everyone, but I think it is helpful for some folks. If I'm getting the survey and I have it in advance of the sale, to me, it makes sense to include it on the compliance letter for the buyer.
Last question. Are the items on that table on the right, are they on the, like, the compliance form already, so you would remove those?
Exactly.
So they're already experiencing those, and we're going to remove those?
That's exactly it. So you're getting, if you have a fence that's prohibited because it's uncoated chain link, it'll say, you have an uncoated chain link fence, this is a prohibited material. When you go to replace that fence, it has to be coated chain link or one of these other permitted materials.
We're not going to mention that anymore.
That's my recommendation. This fence can remain for as long as its useful life. Most people aren't upset when they go to replace the fence and realize that they have to have, because we don't really prohibit that many materials, they're probably going to put something in that's conforming, that seems less relevant for folks, and kind of trying to reduce that minutia.
The other comment?
Ann, how often are you finding safety issues?
Very infrequently, thankfully.
Does there run any discussion of calling it something besides compliance?
I'm open. I'm bright and stormy.
I know, I know we're joking, but I do think that there's some marketing spin here that's appropriate, because what I'm hearing from you is this is really supposed to be informative to residents, and I, I think the feedback that I get, which is not frequent, but what I do get is it feels punitive. Sellers are feeling like, what is the Village doing in my business? This feels invasive, it feels like they're trying to stand between me and selling my home. And so, you know, transparency and maybe a fancy new name would help with that.
I wasn't joking. It's no longer compliance, it's information transfer.
Yeah. And I do think there's space for the realtors, the real estate community, and maybe real estate attorneys to do some, maybe... estate attorneys to do some maybe thought on communication, like, get ready, this is how you get ready to sell, you know, here are the things. Do you have, you know, do you have a permit for the last project you did in your house? Things like that, just a consideration.
Sure. I try to include that on the Village webpage. Now, it's not as splashy as someone who has a marketing background, but we do try to explain, you know, if you're anticipating selling your house. We do have a frequently asked questions section that says, I'm selling my house, what do I need to do? So we try to cover that. But again, any additional communication from brokers and attorneys would be greatly appreciated. And I'm sure they do that.
The other comments, questions. Well, this is not for us to take action, but rather to give direction to staff, but then prepare the necessary ordinances or do further research as needed. I think what I'm hearing are perhaps two or three themes. Two for sure. One is more precision and clarity. You know, avoid terms like when necessary and try to be more precise with it, so everyone knows exactly, to the extent possible, knows exactly what this is. And related to that, the title should reflect what its real purpose is, since it's not really for compliance necessarily, that may be a small aspect of it, but it's more about the village being able to record the transfer of a sale of property, right? To be able to have our records up to date and know that everything, if there are any outstanding issues, such as fees due or whatever, they're paid. And then I also heard a little bit, not as much, but a little bit about, you know, should we consider dialing it back even more? So I would ask staff to look and see if there's any, anything that maybe you might consider. Not, I'm not assuming that the board would agree with dialing it back, the majority of the board, but we always want to look and see what opportunities might be there. Did I summarize that fairly? Did I miss anything? So that's direction for staff, and thank you, Ann. Very excellent job with this, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So this, just so everyone knows, we're not sure when this will come back. Staff will assess and determine that, but I would ask staff to notify the same people when you get to the point of getting it ready to come back to the board. Okay, back to the regular order. First, was there anyone here to talk about item 10B, which is ordinance amending Title 10 of the Village Code relating to surface coverage standards? Seeing none, we'll just go back to 10A, resolution authorizing a transfer from the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency.
President Pollak?
Yes.
Did you apologize for interrupting, but did we want to see if anybody's here for the food truck?
Oh, sure. Is anybody here to talk about food trucks? All right, well, let's go to that item. Thank you. I appreciate that. I always like to get to those items. We appreciate people coming out for these things, so, and when people are here, I would like to get to those sooner rather than later, when possible. This item is discussion relating to food trucks and mobile vending. Assistant Manager Monroe.
Thank you. Good evening. Emily, would you actually start with the couple of recommendations, and then we can flip back if anybody wants to see the diagrams here? So thank you for the opportunity to talk about this issue. We had been approached last year by a interested mobile food truck vendor. They wanted to see what our requirements were for siting in Riverside along Harlem Avenue. Our Village Code does not have any specifications related to the location or placement of mobile food vendors. So predominantly, if you're talking about a mobile food vendor, you're talking about a food truck, it may be a food cart. We are, we do have some prohibitions. For example, we don't permit ice cream trucks to go circulate around town, but we have on occasion permitted food trucks for either special events or other events. People privately request food trucks to come to their house for private catering. This past year, the villages of Riverside Farmers Market hosted a food truck. As the notes in the agenda item explain, that this food truck that served the farmers' market had been a farmers' market vendor, and they changed their business model, they requested a space at the market for their food truck instead of the table and tent. And we were able to accommodate that one space in order to do that. So this is bringing us to a general conversation about what the board's expectations are for any further regulation or requirements for a food truck operation throughout town. What we're ultimately landing on would be coordinating with a special event application as one option. When we have special events, we can anticipate the level of maintenance required, sanitation required in a particular location, where they're planning to park a vehicle, if there's any particular traffic challenges in that location, and just a general safety requirement. This could be for either events held on public property, right? So anything parked in our public right-of-way or for our events. Or it could be applied to anyone hosting on private property. We could modify the special event application in order to basically accommodate this particular type of use. We would still require health and safety inspection standards, registration for food trucks that would request that permission. Currently, we, if any private entity requests a food truck, they hire somebody, they park in a private parking lot, there is not, to date, a requirement for them to show any particular health standards, safety standards for that event. We do for the farmers' market, so just like all of the other farmers' market vendors, they're required to show some type of certificate of insurance, as well as their commissary inspection information, if they have that. For the food truck that we did permit with a business license, it currently operates at 3346 South Harlem. I'm not aware of other locations in town where they've chosen to locate. It's a private agreement with a private property that, you know, we permitted with a business license. We did require them to get a health inspection, so they are subject to that, just like other restaurants in town, and they provided us with the information required for a business license. When we do that, we do have to consider that brick-and-mortar restaurants are required to pay for their appropriate sales taxes, they pay a places for eating sales tax submission to the village, and so we get, we do get revenue from those entities. The places for eating tax does not apply to a mobile vendor, and so that's why when discussing this with other departments, when discussing with the finance department, the recommendation to, for discussion purposes, is to increase an annual business license fee to the mobile food vendors to $1,000. And then finally, because of this issue where we don't necessarily know where to anticipate food trucks, we are recommending either to set a separation requirement of approximately 300 feet from established restaurants, or to revise our code to allow restaurants or food trucks, I'm sorry, to operate in conjunction with those special events. So we can either create some system where special events for food trucks may have a set number of opportunities that they have throughout the year, we would have to track that, or we could provide just an allowance for food trucks to operate within a certain area of the community. So there's a couple of things just to kind of talk through, whether you think it's appropriate to permit food trucks, you know, in conjunction with special events. We do for some and have for some, but this would apply to all. And then whether you would want to change our business licensing fee for those vendors, or if you'd like to establish and/or like to establish some type of separation requirement. We can flip to any locations or anything that was provided in the packet, and I'll answer any questions. We also have some representatives of property and food truck.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashley. Any questions for staff before we go to public?
Ashley, what's the license fee right now?
It's $100 plus any health inspection fees, and which are passed through costs because we have to pay our health inspector.
Okay, I have a question on D. When we have the food truck there for the farmers' market, how far away is that from any restaurant currently?
It would be, actually, you can flip up then, Emily. Really, within the, continue to go towards, there we go, one more. There we go. So here's a 100-foot buffer. It includes, from the farmers' market location, includes Lennon Ice Cream Sand trap, included the Masonic Temple parking lot, because it's one of the larger privately-owned parking lots in town. There were to be a food truck that locates there, because they come to some agreement, it would also impact these restaurants. If you flip down one more. If you go to a 300-foot buffer in the downtown area, it then encompasses all of these other places, essentially. We use La Stancia's location at 25 Forest as an example, just because it's kind of that point that's pretty central in the downtown. And so as you move farther to the east, you'll end up encountering, you know, others, where you run into the Dulce Mommy and Michael's Pancake House and others down the street.
And this one is 300, is that right?
That's 300-foot buffer. So it's really a decision point. We could go somewhere in between where there's, you know, there's a 200-foot, but the point being was that even 100 feet in the downtown area does impact where a 300-foot buffer still is only on the very border of, for example, Alfaro on Harlem Avenue, where the food truck is currently parked.
We had the food truck for the farmers' market last summer. Did any of our current restaurants complain about that?
No.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge. I didn't have that.
So, may I?
Yeah.
So your recommendation in D is to either implement some number of foot buffer or prohibit these mobile food vendors other than for special event applications?
Without, right.
Okay. And if we were, if we were to go with the model of the special event applications, is it your intent that the farmers' market use is seasonal and periodic enough that it would qualify as, it'd be intended as a special event?
Yeah, it currently, I believe, they complete their own special event application, so it would be approved through that process. And so say there was an entity that wants to hold a monthly food truck rally, we would incorporate that as a special event and require that. You know, if Little League or other sports groups want to host a food truck when they hold their games on the weekends, just a notification of saying, we're going to have this food truck here every Saturday for three weeks or three months, knowing that that's in place as part of their application could resolve concerns about what safe food is being served and just making sure that they're not parking in an inappropriate space, right? You don't want necessarily, you know, if there's street-side parking across the street from where the fields are, they may need a special accommodation to make sure kids aren't running across Long Common, you know, so we could iron those details out.
Two more questions. In that situation, how would staff propose to make those kinds of decisions? How would you manage the request for, you know, a one-time food truck, or an every Saturday food truck, or a six-week food truck, or a food truck that wants to be in a private parking lot five days but not seven days?
Yeah.
You know, I'm just thinking about transparency and fairness in staff.
Yes, yes. So we would come, essentially, depending on the board's direction here, we can come back with whatever recommendations we would apply to a special event process that pertain to food trucks. So if the board's, you know, open to potential for food trucks operating 365 days a year, the distance is probably the best requirement that we'd put in place, and we can just regulate on that. If you want to say similar to, I mean, I hate to bring it up, but the discussion about feather flags in town is, you know, we had that same type of discussion as to what level and frequency of those uses are appropriate and where. And so not trying to approach it from that side, but it could be that, where you'd say, we would like to see this, every month, a group is permitted to hold something with a mobile food vendor, or it's a seasonal thing for our commercial districts, and they need a special event application just to notify us and make sure that it's safe to eat there.
Got it. And sorry, I just had one last question. If we went with a foot model, a one or two or 300-feet model, that would be prohibiting mobile food vendors that are within that radius of an established business?
Correct.
So if you had a, if there's a private property that is within that boundary?
Mm-hmm.
Say there's a home that's within 200 feet, and that's the established distance of a restaurant, then they could never have a food truck in their driveway for a private party?
We could, we could make that exception. So if it's completely, if it's completely enclosed on a private property, I know there, you know, there's been for, during the parade, I know there was a request for a food truck on private property serving, it could be for the general public, but primarily for their family or friends or whatever, that would be excluded from that permission, as long as it's not leading to other traffic disruptions. It's kind of like our filming policy for commercial filming, where if you're including, keeping it all on your private property, we shouldn't really have a say in how you're choosing to use that until it comes into the public way and it creates an issue.
But there are private commercial properties that...
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's the, okay.
So I think deciphering between residential versus commercial.
Correct, correct. Thank you.
Just piggybacking on that, so I know that the gas station likes to have the taco truck as well, so are they, do they have to reach out to us for permission, or since it's their own private property, they can just have anybody, just like any residential home, they could invite anybody, they don't need to reach out to the village?
To date, that's the case. So this was a request of saying, well, what are the rules? Are they allowed? Our code requires some type of license being provided to someone who's operating regularly in town, so that's what we applied.
And we did get some feedback by email from one of the business owners about this.
Ashley, couldn't we also consider saying, like, I'm just using this as an example, but like a certain parking lot, like there's, like zoning, basically zoning an area, saying you can have a food truck in this area and that's it?
We could, yes.
Okay.
So just to clarify, right now, food truck is considered a special, requires a special event permit, correct? Is that how they're authorized?
Doesn't require anything.
No.
Doesn't require anything.
It does require some type of license, so if they're regularly operating here as a business, they are required to have some type of license or permission, just like other types of licenses issued by the village of, you know, liquor licenses, cigarette vending, vending machine license, all of that.
But only on the public way?
No, no.
Private and public.
So even, so even in the gas station, we would have to, they would have to contact?
Some type of license.
They currently do have to.
And on a residential area? I think I just asked that.
Well, the residential area, so if somebody's having a party that's catering for their family, and they park their food truck in their backyard driveway, they're not contacting us about it. If it's a commercial property, that is where we get... If it's a commercial property, that is where we get, you know, you get a little bit more, say where, where there's, you know, you get into the zoning uses and other things that, that start piling up as, as questions to resolve, so.
So the cost of the business license for a food truck that comes anywhere from one to three times a year is like $100, but it's the exact same $100 for someone who's regularly and consistently?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I, I, right now, would be more in favor of, you know, that $1,000 seems awfully steep for someone who's only coming, you know, maybe once, maybe twice a year for special events on call for residents or for, you know, community events.
So, so we can distinguish, right? So if there, if there's a desire to continue to have food trucks operate on a regular basis, we keep our model the same as it is, then the recommendation is to increase the fee to offset some of the things that are potentially being lost by, by the village. If we are operating on a model of special events where, like I said, a nonprofit group is coming in, they're using the park for whatever it is they want to do, they have a special event, Little League is using it and they bring them in a couple of times, it, I agree that that $1,000 is probably not the right level. It's, it should be a modified fee for just a special event use, right? Making accounting for us potentially picking up trash or cleaning up the street or having other police presence come, come by if they're, like I said, parked funny or something to, to that effect. And that's what our event applications do. They alert, alert us to that potential need.
Are there business owners there?
I should suggest we go to the public now. If you would like to address the board, please introduce yourself and tell us what, what your concerns are.
My name's Bill McCluskey. I'm COO of Armarts. We operate the site at 3346 South Harlem. You know, I've been in front of you guys before. We, we've done an extensive remodel. The village did a great job, gave us some money to do the front of our store and we're very appreciative. We're in a tough business right now. You don't, you guys know, the 7-Eleven went out of business. There's a reason the 7-Eleven went out of business. Can't make any money. We're across the street from a Costco selling gas, 30 cents below my cost today. So we're struggling and we need to find better ways to attract more customers. And Anthony here is Prime Taco and he and I met and we started talking and we came up with a pretty good idea, we think. And the big thing about food is consumers want more out of convenience store. If you guys see anything that's built new, New Thornton and Quick Trip, they're spending four, $5 million on these sites. And they have a vast food menu. We have, we have older sites and older antiquated site. We're landlocked, we don't have a big parcel of land, but we still have to try to compete. And one of the ways we have to do is we have to be different. And we found something here that we think is working. It's, I like it because I, I satisfy my customers and we're getting more customers because of it. I select Prime Tacos because it's ranked as one of the best taco trucks in, in the Chicagoland area. He's got a unique following and people follow the truck and they want to go where the truck is at. So it's attracted more people for us. Our agreement, it's really simple. I don't pay him anything. Nothing. Our, what we do is, we made an agreement, I get the packaged soda sales and he gets the taco sales. That's it. So it's, this isn't a high-finance thing. This is something that we tried as a whim to see how it would work and it's working. And we're damn proud of it. We have a, we have a following now. And whether it's a, a 100 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet, that shouldn't matter. The idea is to make your business better. That's the idea. And you have to try stuff. And my God, we're trying stuff. We've spent probably 150,000 over the last two years on that site that we don't even own. We rent. So we've made that commitment to Riverside. I believe we're the second-leading sales tax provider in the, in the village, second or third. Well, 7-Eleven's gone, so that's probably going out. But, and I've been running that store since 1992. I've been in there. I, I live here in Riverside. So I, I, I take a lot of pride in what we do there. So think about that. When you think about what we're going to do and whether it's a special event or anything like that. But think about the things that we're fighting to do to be, to survive these days. So we would just want the opportunity to be involved in the process because I think that's fair. I think that's fair. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this?
Good evening, guys. I'm Anthony, I'm the owner of the food truck. Just wanted to say thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to get my business license and bring my truck here. I just want to let you guys know, you know, I followed all the rules, all the procedures, you know? I get inspected quarterly, just like everybody else does, just like everyone else does. I believe we are maybe more than 300 feet from any other food establishment, so that's a good thing as well. I don't ever want to take anything from anyone. We work really hard for what we do and, and, you know, we are grateful to also have a really big social media, social media following as well. So we use that to our advantage. We, we want to thank Bill for, for having us at his establishment and Megan also too. She's the one that helped us, you know, go through the process, the correct way to make sure that we, you know, did everything we had to do to make sure we were able to, to cook here on-site. So for the most part, I mean, whatever, whatever it can be, this is how I feed my families. When my kids go to, go to Ames Elementary, I do a lot of community work for the school. You know, whenever they call me to come cook, I'm always, you know, you know, handing out free food, what, whatnot. But, um, yeah, I, I enjoy being here and, and I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity and, and Bill, Bill as well. And, you know, like I said, I'm treating my truck as, as, as if it was a restaurant. I mean, I do have goals of opening one up one day for sure. But, um, yeah, health is on point, you know, food is, is, is on point, my insurance is on point. I'm doing everything I have to do to, to follow your guys' guidelines, so thank you guys for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say that, you know, to the, both of their credit, they've been good neighbors, they've done everything that they're supposed to be doing. It's just a matter of discussion of what does the board see that we need to do, if anything?
Thank you. I have a question for, for Bill. If you come back up, please.
By the way, this is why you partner with a guy like this. He's, this is what the American dream is about, right here. And he is a quality, quality young man.
How often do you have the food truck at your property?
We've been doing it Thursday through Sunday.
Every week?
They get there about 1 o'clock in the afternoon and till their food's all gone, which is usually about 8, 9 o'clock.
So Thursday through Saturday?
Thursday through Sunday.
Through Sunday, every week?
Yeah, we have been doing it every week. And I understand the, the whole sales tax, your finance guy's spot on. I mean, you, you gotta, you gotta take care of that.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll certainly work with you guys in terms of, you know, coming up with a solution for that. But hey, this is working, guys. Don't screw it up.
Thank you. We, is there an issue with collecting sales tax from food trucks?
So similar to the farmer's market, the business needs to make sure that they register that as another site or location and then record those different transactions and then report those to Department of Revenue.
But they do, they do that? The one we have in town is doing that, correct?
I am not aware. I would have to ask directors of all to research that one.
We'd have to check and see if they've reported anything to Riverside.
Okay. Trustees? Additional questions, comments? Trustee Evans?
I just wanted to comment that it's sort of, it's actually a tougher discussion than what we're having here today because, you know, Thursday through Friday, that's, you know, the majority of the week. And we also have businesses that serve, you know, like tacos and, and other Mexican food that have committed to a storefront in town. And in essence, that, that, somebody selling tacos from a food truck takes away that business. And that is the feedback that we've gotten. I also feel that a food truck in town probably, while we might not have had feedback yet, I, I mean, I would like to get feedback from some of the, the restaurants downtown. They all try really, they work really hard, just as hard as you do. You all are in the same position of trying to support your businesses and come up with new ideas. And I love your tacos, by the way. But we do have to think there, it's not really just about like one good idea and one awesome taco truck, you know? And whether we should allow that. I, I think we should really like take a minute and talk to some of the other business owners to see what they would think about having a taco truck on Quincy somewhere or on Burlington somewhere. And even at the farmer's market, yeah, we sell pizza, but we also sell, there's also a committed restaurant owner across the street that sells pizza. I think it's, it's fair to consider that part of it as well.
We do have, so the Economic Development Commission has issued a community survey. Okay, our community engagement survey is probably open through the end of this month. We, it's on the website, it's been in the water bill. We've received some information and we can certainly review that. Their next upcoming meeting is the second Wednesday in March. So it's certainly, if the board wants further discussion, certainly something that we can bring, bring up. They have been notified about the potential for this discussion, just as a notification saying it's been brought to our attention and the board may, may hear about it soon. So just putting that out as an option if it's another place that we can get some information. Happy to talk to businesses as well.
The businesses have been notified or EDC?
No, EDC.
Yeah.
Economic Development Commission, yeah.
I would like an official opinion from EDC.
Yeah.
I'd also like to know if we can request one from the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Yes, we, we would like, yeah, definitely want feedback from our Economic Development Commission. The chamber's a good idea.
As of right now, I'm looking at this as what's in the best interest of the residents, which in this case are the customers. And, you know, competition is capitalism and the more choices that the consumer has, the better and the better the product. Like Mr. McCluskey said, it's, it's making their business better and that benefits everybody, really.
Yeah.
So if those standards are raised, then, then it is better for all of our residents and anyone who comes into town and, and patronizes those establishments. So I'm, I'm liking this food truck idea a lot.
This, this is not an issue unique to Riverside, obviously. Food trucks are a lot of different villages and what I've seen in other villages is, well, just to premise that by saying, you know, we don't regulate competition in the marketplace. That is not the role of the village government. If a brick-and-mortar taco store wants to open next door to Alfaro, if the zoning permits it, we let them do it. The issue often with the food trucks is are we, are we creating an unfair playing field because the food trucks aren't paying the overhead of the brick-and-mortar store and are we creating unfair competition by allowing food trucks? Not saying we are or we aren't, but that's the issue that is usually discussed by municipalities when they're talking about food trucks. But anyway, yes.
I, I'd just like to echo trustee Evans and agree that this is a hard problem. This is a complex problem. And Mr. McCluskey, I, I know a little bit about your business from the engagements we've had. I appreciate that you've been in town a really long time. I know that you have employees that have been very long-tenured, several of whom live in Riverside. You've committed to our village and we appreciate that. That's what we want. We also, we want many businesses to commit to our village and we, I, I don't know what we owe them, right? But we do have businesses that are struggling a little bit with this new dynamic and so it's a complex problem. I appreciate that you're very creative to try to solve some of the headwinds that your business is facing and I'm, I'm so happy that Prime Taco has found, you know, some success here. And I, I would invite you to consider a brick-and-mortar location in the fine village of Riverside. Please. So I, I, I don't have a great answer here. I, I think getting some feedback is important. I want all of you to succeed. I want all of you to be happy. It is hard to run a business in Riverside, we know that. And so perhaps a food truck is a way for businesses that couldn't otherwise be successful in a brick-and-mortar fashion can be successful. But we do have other businesses who have, who have committed, who have established here, who, who have a following that could be impacted by that. And so I, I think this process is a healthy one. I'd like to hear some feedback from the relevant commissions in the chamber and see where we go here.
Can I add something else, Doug? Doug, can I add something else? So what the business owner from Prime Taco just said was he would like to open one up. So I see this as an opportunity, as we have done as a village, in creating an incubator space for small businesses to come in, start up and, and grow here. They're doing that in the private sector.
I also think there's something to be said for business driving business. I mean, one of the things that we've talked about, especially, I remember this coming up in the Starbucks discussion, is the idea that if you bring a business and a successful business, people are visiting a successful business and then hopefully they go down the street and visit another business and, you know, hopefully they're visiting some of the other places. Or they, you know, come here to your taco truck and then they're like, "Oh, wow." You know, like, "Hey, maybe one of these times we'll try that restaurant down the street." I do think that there's something to be said for business driving business. I understand it's, it's a complex problem, but the more thriving businesses we have in Riverside, I think the better that is for Riverside in the long run.
The, the buffer areas that were used for illustration in the packet weren't to, to promote exclusion, but to illustrate the areas of general impact within those, those areas. So if we, like other communities, for example, because, because our neighboring community did institute that 100-foot buffer, for us, 100 feet is a really extensive area that encapsulates a lot of our businesses and isn't, you know, is maybe more impactful in either direction, for good or bad, because of that proximity and the limited amount of commercial areas that we have in town.
Could I have a quick question? Where do parks and trucks outside the 300 feet?
Okay.
Well, that's...
It's hard to demonstrate there.
Let me ask that question in a different way, or ask that as a question. If you're, and I know it's up to us how we measure that, but is it measured property line to property line or is it measured from the actual food truck to the door of the restaurant?
This, this in particular is from the center point of a parcel.
Of a restaurant parcel.
Correct. So if you were to go from, you know, the other property line, the northern property line of where Alfaro is located, it, it may creep that 300-foot buffer. But if, you know, if we want to say, "Well, it's 200 feet," well, then you're, you're going down, yeah, so then it's completely, you know, it starts to shrink that area and it becomes on the other side of Armarts rather than, than there. And, you know, it's up to the board to decide whether you want a distance separation or not, or if you do, if that's a sufficient distance.
And how you measure it?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I think what I'm hearing is that we want to hear from at least Economic Development Commission and the Chamber of Commerce. I'm wondering if we want to hear from planning and zoning because in terms of the issue of private property, because they would be concerned about land use compatibility as well as traffic circulation.
I would not be opposed to that either.
I mean, obviously just, you know, on private property, I mean, I could foresee a situation where, I mean, you'd have to define which zoning districts you want to allow this in because otherwise someone could park a food truck next door to a residential property and it's there three, four, five days a week and that's obviously not a desire. property and it's there three, four, five days a week. And that's obviously not desirable. So, uh, we would want to set regulations on that.
Do we want to wait until we have a more narrow idea of what we're proposing?
Uh, that would be fine. You mean, hear from Chamber and EDC first?
Then maybe EDC can talk to some businesses?
Works for me.
Okay.
Uh, is there a consensus in that regard or?
Just to clarify, so we're gonna, so things remain as is until we get more information and hear from more people?
They can continue to operate as they have been.
Okay.
Uh, staff will keep them informed as this process moves forward so they can participate to the extent that they want to.
Yeah.
But it'll appear on, on the next available Economic Development Commission meeting and will notify the Chamber and ask for their input as well. And then it'll come back to us.
Very good. Thank you so much for the direction. I appreciate it and the comments from you as well.
Thank you. Bring back to 10A now. Uh, does it look like there's anyone left to, I don't have to move anything around anymore, but, uh, okay.
Please really quit.
10A. A resolution authorizing a transfer from the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency excess surplus fund to the village's general fund and water sewer fund to offset general liability insurance expenses exceeding the fiscal year 2024 budget. Directors of Allah.
Good evening. Thank you. So last year was the first year of the high deductible election of a hundred thousand dollars. And as part of choosing that process and choosing that, uh, deductible, there was an Irma utilization policy that was adopted to reconcile the village's general liability insurance expenses compared to the budget. A transfer may be requested to cover any variances from the Irma excess surplus fund. So the two charts displayed are for the general fund and the water sewer fund. And to be very clear, this is just a reconciliation of the insurance account. This is not their fund balance. Their fund balances are expected to have a surplus, both of them at the end of, of 2024's audit. So you could see the $48,984 is a budget variance in the general fund. The expenses exceeded our budget. And in the water sewer fund, $6,926. So it's important to also note that there are seven open claims at this moment that are not resolved. Um, it's difficult to, um, estimate the financial impact and when those claims will be resolved. So the board is left with the option to either, um, approve a fund transfer as of right now with a reconciliation that may have to happen in a future year. It could be next year, it could be the year after. Or the, but, the board can choose to wait until all claims are closed, which I have no idea. It could be this year, it could be next year. But if, if we do elect that second option, these budget variances are going to draw down on our capital that's already allocated for 2025. And as staff recommends, do not disrupt that capital plan that was already approved, to do a transfer now. And if needed, another reconciliation will be brought forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Directors of Allah? Uh, any comments? What's your preference?
I think we should follow staff recommendation.
I agree.
Same.
So, uh, let's see, is this, this is a resolution?
It's a resolution.
So, um, I would ask, uh, well, no public comment, I assume? No? David, you don't... LAC doesn't want to weigh in on this. So, uh, someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Marcia Osko?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Motion approved, resolution approved. Um, the last item on our agenda is an ordinance amending various sections of Title 10 of the Village Code, zoning ordinance relating to surface coverage standards. Um, I believe that's an extensive discussion. So, uh...
It's like it doesn't have to be.
I'll ask the board, do you want to plow through this or do you want to table this?
Table.
Table, please.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second.
Motion in second to table. All in favor say aye.
It's five to nine.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No, the item's tabled.
Sorry, Anne.
Come back to our agenda when's, agenda's accommodated. Um, there is extensive write-up on this. Thank you, Ann. And I think, uh, you know, hopefully, you know, go through it again. And please forward any questions you have to, to village staff ahead of time and that'll, as always, will expedite our, our discussion. Uh, trustee reports? Any, are there any trustee reports this evening? Trustee Gallegos?
So I would just like to say happy anniversary to our longest-serving police officer known as Ski. I'm going to say it's Phil Nassatell Ski because I'm one of the few people who know how to pronounce it. Um, and I don't care if I embarrass him because he used to be parking tickets and at parties and stuff. So happy anniversary, Ski. So if you're watching, thank you so much for serving our town and keeping everyone safe.
Awesome.
Yes.
Thank you, Alex. Uh, any other trustee reports? Uh, we do not have need for an executive session this evening, so I would ask for a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 8:56 P.M.